Please come to order. Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the July 10th meeting of Glendale City Council. May we have the roll call, please?
Council members Alhajanian.
Present.
Devine.
Here.
Garpadian.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Sinanian.
Here. Excuse me. Excuse me. If you want to talk, you're welcome to go outside and speak, but we're having a council meeting right now. Thank you. What's next on the agenda?
Next is the flag salute.
And today's flag salute will be led by council member Garpadian, who's not here. Council member Najarian will lead us in the flag salute.
Thank you. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for this evening's invocation. Today, we return to these chambers for a meeting of this city council to deliberate the issues that most concern our jewel city. As we pray, let us draw inspiration from leaders who came before us and whose shoulders we stand on to look out onto the horizon. John F. Kennedy spoke the following words at his inaugural address in 1961 upon taking the oath of office for President of the United States. So let us begin anew, remembering on both sides that civility is not a sign of weakness and sincerity is always subject to proof. Let us never negotiate out of fear, but let us never fear to negotiate. Let both sides explore what problems unite us instead of belaboring those problems which divide us. This evening, let us pray for civility in these chambers and in our everyday lives as we strive to prove our sincerity upon sharing those views and listening to those who may dissent or share a different opinion. We pray that our city continues to prosper and nurture and those for everyone who calls it their home, both who work here and who live here. Lastly, let's keep in mind those who continue to serve in our nation's armed forces. Let us pray for them and their families and wish them to be reunited soon. We pray for all of this and peace tonight and always. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. May we have the report, please?
The agenda for the July 10th, 2018 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is postponed Friday, July 6th, 2018, on the Bolton Board Outside City Home.
Thank you. What's next on the agenda?
Next is a presentation of appointments at 3:00 a.m. Agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, July 17th, 2018.
Yes. Mr. Lawrence.
Mayor Sinanian, and members of the city council. For next week, we have the Glendale Housing Authority at 2:30 p.m. To commence at 3:00 p.m. We also have the special meeting of the Glendale City Council at 3:00 p.m. On the agenda, Director of Community Development, Ray of the City Vote for the Expansion and Renewal of the Greater Downtown Glendale Community Benefit District. For the regularly, for the regular meeting, the agenda begins at 6:00 p.m. Next week, the following consent items. Director of Finance, designation of authorized representatives for FEMA and Cal OES disasters assistance. Police Chief, Ray inmate food service agreement with LA County Sheriff's Department. Public Works, Geo-Technical Soils Engineering and Materials Testing Report, Review on-Call Services. General Manager of Water and Power, Inter-Mountain Power Project, Alternative Repowering and California Energy Commission, Emissions Performance, Standard Compliance Filing. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, amended and restated Little Lake Communication Site Agreement. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, Amendment Number Two to Transmission Services Agreement Number 10929. And General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, Amendment to an Existing Professional Services Agreement with Alliance for Cooperative Energy Services Power Marketing LLC. On the action items, we have Director of Finance, Local Sales Tax Protection Initiative, Public Works, Five-Year Purchase Order Contract with Right-Away Axle Suspension Incorporated for the Provision of Specialized Miscellaneous Parts and Labor for City-Owned Refuge Trucks and Other Heavy-Duty Vehicles. Director of Development, Armenian-American Museum and Cultural Center of California. And lastly, under hearings, Public Works, Approval of the Final Engineers Report and Ordering the Levy and Collection of Annual Assessments for the North San Fernando Road Corridor Landscape Maintenance District for Fiscal Year 2018 and 2019.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Next item at 3B is the mayor's commendation. City activists Bill and Sharon Weisman.
All right. Oh, there we, there. Okay. Sharon. Bill. Welcome back.
Thank you.
And welcome back to you.
Thank you. Thank you. So I have a commendation for you, and I'm going to read that into the record. And it states, "Presented to Bill and Sharon Weisman, community activists, in recognition of your immeasurable contribution and positive impact in the city of Glendale. Your hard work and dedication as active members in our community have been influential and greatly appreciated. On behalf of the city of Glendale, I wish you continued success in all your future endeavors."
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mayor Sinanian, council members, the city staff, and the public were both kind of overwhelmed by this. We only found out about it yesterday, so we haven't had a lot of, lot of time to adjust. We greatly appreciate the honor, and we're proud to be part of a large group of, I would say, hundreds of volunteers that assist the city of Glendale in many different areas and like to feel that some of, some of this is due to all those people as well. And we, I think, have a few of our fellow volunteers in the back of the room that are here. But the, I like to think of Glendale as, as a Goldilocks city. It's not too big like Los Angeles. It's not too small. It's big enough to have its own police department and fire department and water and power department and school district. And it's a human-scale city where we can interact with the elected officials and our city staff members in an effective manner, and I think we've both come to appreciate that a great deal. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
If Sharon has anything.
Yes, thank you all, and, and we decided not to, to name the others who have been with us all along, helping, because we forget somebody. There's so many. And I just really encourage everyone to participate. Come to city council meetings and, and board and commission meetings, and it's really much more rewarding than just being frustrated and commenting on, on social media. So thank you very much, and, and we know it's a long night, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Don't go, don't walk away. Hold on, hold on, don't. Weisman's.
Don't go away.
It'd be a nicer photo with the, with the. So, but I'm gonna give it to Councilmember Agujanian to present to you. You all, I think you have some comments.
Well, I, I just want. Actually, Councilmember Agujanian was one of the, the first of you I met because he covered the Glendale Peace Vigil way back, it must have been like 2004 or '05, so many years ago. Thank you.
Can I speak?
Thank you.
I just, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, of course.
I just wanted to let the Weisemen's know that this is very well-deserved. You have been engaged in our community and in the issues that we face here at city council for many years. You are the watchful eye of the far north, and we appreciate that. And I want, I want to also thank you for your words of wisdom. A lot of times, you don't agree with what we're doing or what's going on in the city, but you always have a positive perspective, and that is so appreciated, I think, by all of us. So thank you for all the work that you do in our community. You're welcome.
And, and just briefly, I know that the same way you can't name all your friends that help you with your volunteer work, we can't go through your biographies either. But Bill, you're a former transportation and parking commissioner. You served the region on one of the metro boards as my appointee. You fought to stop the 710 Tunnel successfully, and on, and on, and on. And Sharon keeps you in line, and I know you're a great team. And I wish, are you going anywhere? Are we gonna, you're not leaving town or anything, are you? Okay. I know you're enjoying some of your free time. I see the Facebook posts, all the great bands that you're revisiting, and the baseball game last night. So please, please don't phase out. Please stay engaged, because you are one of the true, you, both of you are one of the true anchors of our community, be it far north or the entire area. So thank you very much for your commitment.
And you never miss to men, to, you know, stress that far north Glendale, the La Crisiana portion of Glendale is still Glendale, which is a point that's missed by a lot of people, strangely. They love receiving our services, but for some reason, they don't want to accept the fact that they live in Glendale. But you, you always correct them, so thank you. Yes, Mr. Agujanian.
I don't know. The public knows that Weisman's, they are computer specialists. They worked in Time Warner, if I'm not wrong, long time ago. They were in, you know, top position. While they were there, there were hundreds of people working with them under their supervision. And since 2004, I tried to cover their, you know, activities in favor of citizens of Glendale. And I congratulate both of you for hard work and for citizenship that you demonstrated, that you love this city, and thank you for that hard work.
Okay, thank you. All right, next item.
Next item in 3C is the proclamation designating June as Parks Make Life Better Month.
Sabah Garbidiyan from Parks is gonna receive it.
Hello. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Council members, city staff. My name is Sabah Garbidiyan, Senior Community Services Supervisor with the Community Services and Parks Department. So July is Parks Make Life Better Month. It's a national movement, and we're here to accept the proclamation on behalf of the Community Services and Parks Department. The Parks Department has numerous programs from toddlers all the way up to seniors in our senior services program. And this year, like last year, we decorated and gave you guys a park scene. We wanted to highlight our One Glendale After-School Sports Program. So joining me is Norma Maurer, our program supervisor, and some of the participants and parents in that program. And we've prepared a small clip. We'll do it for you, if we could take a sec.
Being in a team for Adrian has changed him a lot. He's learned how to talk to his teammates. It's made him really social with others. It also helped him come out of the shell and know what he likes to play with the whole team.
Program has impacted my life because I lost a friend and I've grown to be a better sport.
One Glendale, easy to see with teamwork, how to respect each other. This year, we won third place for the soccer, and I will wish to hope to meet my friends here.
I am proud to be in this program because I can play all my favorite sports.
I'm in third, third grade, and I can't wait to be in fourth grade to join her.
This is an excellent program for our students, our families, and the Glendale community as a whole. This provides an opportunity for all our students to be active in this sports program that builds character, teamwork, and empathy. One Glendale gives children the ability to be empathetic towards one another. There was an event, the Galaxy Soccer Game, where a group of children actually combined their funds together to be able to purchase hot dogs for all the children in that group, even though some had no financial funds with them during the game. The significance of this is that embracing our children to love one another and also to be the future leaders that thrive on those characteristics that will make us successful in the future.
So parks do make life better, and for that reason, I have a proclamation, which is very long. Bear with me, I'm gonna read it. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including city of Glendale, and are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities. And whereas throughout the city of Glendale, we're fortunate to have 47 beautiful park recreation and special use facilities, including 286 acres of developed parkland and over 5,000 acres of open space and a wide variety of outdoor recreation opportunities for its citizens and visitors. Whereas the Community Services and Parks Department promotes health and wellness and offers an array of opportunities to go outside and play through fitness classes, sports and recreation programs, cultural events, lifelong learning classes in parks, trails and facilities for fitness, and sports activities for all age groups and abilities. Whereas the Community Services and Parks Department also provides programs to address the basic human service needs for its residents, including senior nutritional meals and youth management and case management, youth and family outreach, information and referral, youth employment and youth life skill training, homeless case management, prevention and housing, and job training programs. And whereas the Community Services and Parks Department strengthens community safety and security and reduces juvenile crime while fostering youth development and growth into productive adults through an array of after-school and seasonal programs. And whereas the strength of Glendale is increased through international recreation programs, intergenerational recreation programs, and events for all ages that allow people to play and grow together while providing the opportunity for residents to lead balanced, rewarding, and healthy lives. Now therefore, I, Zara Sinanian, Mayor of the city of Glendale, proclaim July 2018 as Parks Make Life Better Month in Glendale and call on all of your, our citizens to celebrate by participating in recreation activities and community services and spending time in our community's parks. So I think that's what these balls are all about, right? Okay. I'm gonna come down there and give you the proclamation myself.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And you know what? I'm gonna ask my colleagues to. Congratulations. Good job. Yeah. Did you get a pic? Have fun. Good job. Proud mama. How are you? Did you get one? Hold that for the picture.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes, please.
While, while we're waiting for the families to leave, if there's any, if there are any parents out there that have kids that might be eligible in our schools for this One Glendale program, I have to tell you, it is absolutely fantastic, and please, get your kids involved as soon as you can. It's great. As soon as the school year starts, right?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, next.
Next is the consent items, including minutes following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion. A member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before a motion is proposed.
I will pull item number, I'm sorry, item number C. If someone will move the balance of the consent calendar.
I'll move the balance of the consent calendar.
Second.
May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Agujanian.
Yes.
Devine.
Yes.
Garpadian. Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian.
Yes. Will you please read item number C into the record, 4C?
4C is Public Works regarding implementation of the Bicycle Transportation Plan Project Phase Three. See one's emotional wording, a construction contract, All American Asphalt, in the amount of $437,413.66, approving a 10% reserve of contingency, rejecting all other bids, and authorizing the city manager to execute the contract. Two's resolution appropriating $57,000.
Mr. Golanyan, will you briefly explain what this is about and why we're rejecting all the bids?
Mr. Mayor, item C is.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, no, just, just explain, explain the contract. We're rejecting all the other bids.
Certainly. Mr. Mayor, members of city council, as it was read to the record, this is phase three of the implementation of our bicycle transportation plan that was adopted a few years ago. We went out to bid on May 16th. We received four bids. The lowest bidder, Roy Allen Slurry Seal Company, did not meet the minimum requirement that was stipulated in the contract bid documents. Therefore, they were deemed non-responsive. Subsequently, we are recommending and awarding the contract to All American Asphalt, who is the second lowest bidder. Their bid of $437,413 is over our engineer's estimate of $420,000 by just over $17,000. We're requesting a 10% contingency as well as 10% set aside for construction management by our own staff. The location of the projects are at 10 different locations, but the primary goal of the project is to install sharos by sharing markings on the pavement and as well as some crack sealing and slurry sealing of certain streets that will receive these markings. The funding source for this contract will come from Major R. Regional Return Fund in the amount of $165,000, and the balance will be out of the state gas tax fund.
Okay. Bless you. And the total amount of the contract, including the two 10% increases, the contingency as well as the management. the contingency as well as the management fee?
Yes, it will be five-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, hundred-and-fifty-five dollars.
And of that, the amount that you stated will come from Measure R and the rest from the gas tax?
Correct, sir.
So it's not coming from our budget, from our...
Yes, correct, sir.
This amount was already budgeted for in our budget, or no? This is, I'm trying to...
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, on an annual basis, we get a funding from gas tax per capita of the City of Glendale population. So that gets budgeted into our annual budget, and we just take funds from it as necessary. And Measure R is obviously a long-term planning funding source that we apply for and we receive on a project basis.
Okay. So unless there are other questions...
Do you like a motion?
I am sorry, since it's...
You don't have a question?
I have a question.
Yes, please, go ahead.
The total amount is five-hundred-some?
Yes, Councilman Agajanian, it's five-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, hundred-and-fifty-five, which includes ten percent construction contingency and ten percent for construction management.
Okay, all right.
But the construction contract amount is four-hundred-and-thirty-seven, four-thirteen.
I would like to move the item then.
Second.
Thank you. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Garpadian?
Najarian?
Yes.
Marsonanian?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item on the agenda is city council and staff comments.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Najarian?
Welcome back, everyone. And a lot of things have occurred in the last three weeks, four weeks that we've been off, but I'm not gonna go through each and every one. I will reserve the right to bring them up at a later time when appropriate.
Very well. Anyone else, Ms. Devine?
I would thank you. First of all, I want to thank our, the staff, the boots-on-the-ground from our Glendale Water and Power Company for their outstanding work these last few days during this heat wave to keep the power on. Mr. Zern, I didn't see you sitting there, but thank you and your department. I know the crews were out there twenty-four-seven, I would thank for the three or four days of this horrendous heat wave. We've heard, all of us have heard about cities that had outages for like two days, La Crescenta, for instance. So we are very fortunate to have this staff that was ready, willing, and able to give their time and their energy. That's kind of a play on words, isn't it? Their, their hard work in order to keep our air conditioning on, our electricity on, and I just wanna thank all of them. So, Mr. Zern, I hope that you will pass that on if they're not watching. Second, I would like to mention that Sunday, I attended a film at the Central Library on the Japanese incarceration in America. And what the director did was to follow Glenn Yamada, and I think a lot of you might read the Glendale News Press and it's Catherine Yamada's husband Glenn, who was born in an internment camp. And the filmmaker traveled with him to Arizona, where he was born, and they talked with the family and about the experience. It was quite, quite the experience. I have to tell you, it was amazing. And I wanna thank everybody that was associated with that, Anahid and Ara Oshigan, who are the curators there at the Reflect Space, especially the Yamadas, who dealt again with this very sensitive and painful topic. It was, it was quite extraordinary. The exhibit is still on, and you can go down and see, go to Reflect Space, see the photos and of his family and the papers and the orders that they were given, and it's just incredible to see. It's at the Reflect Space at the Central Library. And finally, it seems that there's a lot of misinformation about the Americana. And so in order, and rumors going around and things coming out on Neighborhood Next Door and other publications. But in order to dispel these rumors and to provide the correct information regarding the finances and other issues that deal with the Americana, I have asked staff, and they are going to be putting information on the rumor page on our website. So please, we're gonna give Mr. Lorenz, who is, who is our chief in charge of the website, about a week and a half to two weeks to get information that's necessary, the correct information, so that everyone knows what is going on at the Americana, what the impact of the loss of the redevelopment funding caused, et cetera. So please, in about two weeks, go to our website, the rumor page, and find out all the information that you need, the truth about the Americana. Mr. Lorenz, do you wanna add anything?
Mayor Sonanian, members of council, I will certainly work directly with Mr. Lansham Fame and Yasmin Beers, and we'll get the information out there that is not correct and make sure that people are well aware of.
Thank you.
I assume that what's referred to as the rumor pages are the page through which we dispel rumors?
We correct.
So perhaps we should call it the facts page?
Yeah.
As opposed to the rumor page? Because it sounds like we're spreading rumors as well.
What happens more than often, Mr. Mayor, is that when you go to an FAQ page, people just kinda pass over it as the typical fact page. And when you hear a rumor, you have a tendency of developing clickbait and wanting to go to it. And that's how we actually catch our fish, so to say.
But that's where they need to go, right, to the rumor page?
Again, we'll work with community development, and we'll, we'll develop the right location for the information to reside.
Thank you. Mr. Agajanian, nothing? No?
Thank you. And I'll, I'll just make one comment because, you know, we had, we, I pulled that item from the consent calendar and as pretty much every contract that we approve in this city, it has a contingency component. And some time back, maybe a year, maybe more, I raised this issue, and I said, well, if something's a contingency, doesn't that mean that it only gets used if there's a need for it? There's a contingency that comes up, and we use those funds to cover a change in estimates or whatever are the basis for the contract? And I was promised that we would bring back, the city staff would bring back a report showing what, what part of, if any, of those contingencies ever goes back into our budget. I haven't seen it. I wanna see it. I think we need to know whether it's a contingency or it's part of the contract. Otherwise, if it's money that just, as a matter of fact, gets used every time there's a contract, then we should just fold it into the contract and call it the contract amount, as opposed to a contingency. So, Mr. Golanyan?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. Actually, we have formulated a spreadsheet between Public Works and GWP, who primarily conduct capital improvement projects that contain the contingencies that you mentioned. And we have kept track of them. We will submit it to council very soon.
Okay, I look forward to seeing it. Thank you. And that's all from the council and staff, I assume. And then next, we have community event announcements, and I have two cards that have been submitted on that item. And we'll start with Linda Burns, followed by Arno Yerezian.
Hello, I haven't seen you for a dog's age. How are you?
Well, how are you, Linda?
Fine, thank you. Mayor Sonanian and council. There it is. I've come to talk about the Fred Clair Celebrity Golf Classic, and it's benefiting the City of Hope. And I think we've, every one of us have known someone or will in time know someone that has had to go to the City of Hope. The golf classic is Monday, August the twentieth. It's at the Oakmont Country Club. And to sign up, the phone number is six-two-six-two-one-eight-four-five-zero-six. Mr. Clair would have been here tonight, but he had an appointment with the City of Hope. He's been battling for the last couple of years, and he seems to be doing well. But one of the things that he asked me to talk about was the celebrities that you are going to meet and greet and see. And that would be Oral Hershizer, Sean Green, Ron Say, Bill Russell, Steve Garvey, Rod Carew, Reggie Smith, and Tommy Lasorda will be receiving the Life Award for the twenty-eight teen celebration. So again, if you're interested in playing or making a donation, There. It's very small writing, so you're probably not going to be able to read that. But I did put a flyer up for you. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have Arno Yerezian next.
Hello. Good to be here again, dear mayor, council members, and staff. I'm Arno Yerezian from the Rossin Art Gallery and Abriel Bookstore, just down the street from you. I'd like to invite you all again, once again, to another exhibit we're doing, which opens this Thursday. It's called, titled "Rizoma: Images of Thought by Gagik Vartanyan." Gagik, also known as Gago, is an Argentinian-Armenian artist who just moved to Glendale about four or five months ago with his family. And this is his first exhibit in California, and we're really honored to be hosting him. Born in Soviet Armenia, Gago grew up and received his education in a socialist-yet-homogeneous environment. As he moved to Buenos Aires in his late thirties, Vartanyan became exposed to a cornucopia of new experiences and cultures, filling his palate with an array of possibilities. Vartanyan's pieces transcend boundaries, mixing cultures, histories, communities, as well as, as well as physical planes and directions. From figures of Lenin, queer Amigas, European harlequins, and pagan satires, faces and spaces exist simultaneously in different planes and colors. There is no beginning nor end, no up and down, rather a celebration of the essence and simultaneity of all things. So the art show opens this Thursday on July twelve at seven PM at Rossin Art Gallery, four-fifteen East Broadway Avenue. We'll have a special Argentinian-style reception and some live music as well. And the exhibit will be up until July thirty-first. And just to keep with the Argentinian theme on, we're presenting an evening of Argentine tango music on Saturday, July twenty-eighth, at seven-thirty PM. You can call us for tickets. And that's it, I hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you, Arno. Love the enthusiasm, but we don't usually clap for events announcements, but okay, great. All right, so let's move on to the three-minute public comments section. And we'll start with Tamara Movsesian, followed by Lucic Gazarian.
Ekelep yere kit asep. Parej raga chadat, zar es sidadat, aradacharad. Avis ter arach, irekite zagaare, besetep. Tohe, foch beket, chet patasqanam, incha besor. Himab, deset xotme, votor imtqaneri he. En jamanak, ere sarre, eres kasei. Him istipas, pote asep, bolori mot. Tesh entre lenk, vor me zo knek, Glendeli bina kichneri. Che, che, staraqan, boloreli, tsaskan me, barne, polanela, hasqanu. You understand me, right?
Ardi, can you pause the, pause the time? The, the translation will be, transcript will be submitted through... Yeah, thank you.
Yes, pola, et he to kase. Vresh. Xotadu beit, red katron, red katron, red katron. El kutari, beru gretzal, kera, hartuk vetzit, ko, barof. Saito. Zaras Sinanian, entre beru zarach, xotatsar. Sectione ti regulaatza, lae kamneri, shenki regulaatza. Sagche masu, mimihatne masu. Incha sarre. Alan adjarad, du xotatsar, ere keki, deprotsqan ere keki, et bilaini, topse di hartsa lutez, vore ere keka. Atruchun, datruchan, meshchlen, hartsharne, tedde protsqanan. Che shda, che shda. Hibi es flashi vra, yes tarbe shenkeri, barne mare, khatre lipdhaanere. Sabis enare, himab, tsutske tans, kse, krisit. Krisa arachinna, arta sheschan. El kris, el taraka, el marchu, el sung. Uel tan, balte, thangasnume. Yeh pek du kverstalu. Pte bui veritz, lae predmanitz, dremanitz, mimbanov tarbe ve kala. Du ha pohwele, sarakines pohwe, iha me maten jama nagva. Balze li arach gnaerli. Irekhit me, jelku hoki chegav, elku mart. Yeh orte, bartana kaleerli. Red katroni hartsa kalutek, kaparzenere. Ampatqartan, terevde, ere shcheinabdi, uel bolori gidets, inchi tskasvet. Duyun, zaret, shadnam gidak, martas, yuib, bashpanerut. Vore martaindu, push charetzik. Das satahi, imkianke, gera, martan. Hoyaqam gidak, yes chey uzum, hases pohwe. Dira fote, hartperume, edan patqarkanocha. Vochi shcharetzik. Dira, amari, misatari, sattam terevresenar, ere sarre, kicha asarren uzum. Vore natsqasun, eita, kia, astarrenel, bananen. Eshunor, ka, hedon, verchad. Mimban pte anek, teche. Ah, banan. Es banere, palitanere, krisa tsutske vetzit, arta sheschan. Ya. Tan mech krisa, chez karun, brmeset, krisain. Krisa lofken, dazumez, krisa lofken, paqma, hedon, pte, a, velop, sadqasne, net, krisan medin. Ya, jo, uter, reta, tali, krisi, et ru me to, barrelu, hamar. Huh?
Okay, thank you.
Ya. Ishten, kha, kha, sarre, jans, es chi karu, le, aybara. Mehat, hartakvek, khet, khet, kitamek, votor, artsaqi, po, vutze. Mi cheme ganskes, volo shezik. Banarezik, amre, ma, anrez. Mi oled, mi cheme ganskes, nustek, es red katroni, ampatqartan, terevi, hartsa lutek. Khatre mek.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, okay, thank you, folks. Folks, please, let's respect each other. This is, you know, everyone wants to speak. We wanna hear everyone. But if we clap for minutes on end after every speech, just it's gonna prolong this meeting for no reason. Please, let's, let's speak and then move on to the next speaker. Lucic Gazarian?
Ay, ya.
Followed by Lili Arutunyan.
Generek, lavek. Mehar haytarek, nikpol, ortel, siromem, yes, yes, ergi, de siromem. Yes, si mitas, ning, gertas, ves, tari, asti. Klintor, jama nagin, emekisteh. Keishek? Che, che, yes, ayren kasim, haytare, amen, hasqan. Yes, este rasqhatere, mi cheme wung tumbeere. Barne vera. Et me xosko, et tun, mokebe, en kam, poro kezi, poro kezi, mi chume kanani cin. Hin ga'ur dolari, es poriamtavet, kantere. Yeh, ima elech, chempkaru, ma, asqhati, mor, amme, niches tere, tere. Hin ga'ur dolari, poriamtavet, kelen, et moke, dehanere, et tur, sel, kandavata, voshman, tan, zerchetavetzin. Barnikes, generek, kuchnis, sahpati, er, kandavate, gedin, kandavate, et elikan, me xosko, sadketin. Ima tek, kthangasni, chi thangasne, chempkaru, asep. Tas ni, tari, ati, a, prume, mes. Adamsi vera, adamso, bradvi, vera. Aru ruxanir, ko, amar, shenkeni. Ima che man, eli noris, kthangasni, techi thangasni.
Can we, please?
Mehar, mehar, mehar ken, kekelen, kste, lav, apre. Yes, ergi, yes, siromem, polo, in, de siromem. Yes, kharasun, tari, hayastan, ne, mashqati, ekelam, ste, ema, pru.
And congratulations. And also, congratulations to Councilmember Devine. Was it your birthday yesterday?
Yeah, it was.
So, happy birthday.
Thank you, thank you.
Sorry, missed it yesterday. Mike, you want to come up? Was that your wife?
No, my wife is here.
I was going to congratulate you, too.
Well, I mean, part of the community announcements is that we are expecting a baby in two months.
Okay, well, congratulations. I knew there was something to congratulate.
That's what it is, that's absolutely what it is. So, I'm Mike Bigorder with the Glendale Tenants Union. We have a really, really busy month coming up, and I wanted to read all of our events backwards. So, on the 23rd, we're going to have the next Glendale Tenants Union meeting, which will be the last meeting we have before we turn in our signatures for the Fair Housing Act, the Rent Stabilization and Fair Housing Act for the city of Glendale, our rent control initiative that we've been pushing. On the 21st, Glendale Tenants Union will be participating in Cruz Night, getting the message out about Prop 10, and why we need to pass Prop 10, where even if you don't think rent control is appropriate for Glendale, we can all agree that every city needs more tools to fight displacement and expand affordable housing. And what works for Glendale may not work for Los Angeles. Prop 10 is the perfect solution to that. It will give us more tools, it will let us move forward in a more meaningful way to protect renters. On the 17th, the Glendale Tenants Union has a comedy fundraiser that we've put together at the Antaeus Theater. And we've already seen some other celebrities on tonight, so I might as well list a few of our own. We have Dave Anthony, Gareth Reynolds, Adam Todd Brown, Jackie Cashian, Moshe Kasher, and James Adomian, as well as musical guests countless thousands. That'll be at 8:00 PM at the Antaeus Theater. We're asking for $10 cash donation, or donate online and bring in your receipt at the door to get entry. This is a world-class comedy lineup. Everybody, well, I don't know if everybody here would enjoy it, but everybody here should go anyways. And lastly, what's coming up most recently is on the 15th, the Glendale Tenants Union will be demonstrating between the Americana and the Galleria malls, demonstrating in support of the residents of 1377 East Windsor, the 63 units of which have gotten increases between $800 and $1,000. We will be protesting Moss &amp; Company, the company that's responsible for that hike. We are going to be sharing information and campaigning for the passage of Prop 10, as well as collecting signatures for our rent control measure. And we will also be protesting the lackadaisical attitude that we're getting from the dice, from this city council, who has thus far failed to meaningfully protect its renters. And so, everybody here with the Glendale Tenants Union, if you'd please stand and walk out with me. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all the speakers. And we can have, yeah, just a little quiet in the chambers. Actually, we usually, you know, once we finish with the announcement portion, we don't go back to it, and we will continue doing that in the future. But we have two cards submitted, so as an exception, I'm going to let these speakers come forth. But please, in the future, submit your cards in advance, so that we can hear you, and then we can hear public comments afterwards. Greg Lemley, followed by Anahito Shakan.
I'm clapping.
Are you clapping now?
Yes, I am.
Mayor Sinanian, members of council. I know many of you knew that this, or feared that this day might never happen. And I do apologize for the delays, but I'm happy to announce that the Lemley Glendale Theater at Wilson and Maryland will be opening soon. Our official announcement date, our official date for opening, we anticipate, will be on Friday, August 3rd. And we'll be preceding that with a community event, or a charity benefit event, benefiting one of Glendale's premier nonprofit organizations. That will be on Wednesday, August 1st. So, we're very pleased that this day is finally coming up. It has been a long process, but we thank all of you on the council and all of the staff for their support during this process, and we can't wait to be part of the Glendale business community. So, Mayor Devine, you got your, or Councilmember Devine, that's your birthday present.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. I know a lot of other people in this community and surrounding communities will appreciate that very much. Thank you for coming tonight to announce this.
My pleasure, thank you.
Thank you. And next speaker is Anahito Shakan. Anahito, you brought a guest with you?
I have a guest with me, thank you.
A friend who I last saw in Osaka, Japan, two years ago. How are you, Guebor?
Hello, everyone.
Mayor Sinanian, councilmembers, I wanted to introduce Guebor Orbelyan, who is here from the Yerevan municipality. He's the head of the Culture and Tourism Office there. And we are happy that, together with the Glendale Public Library and Reflect Space, we have an exhibit coming up, celebrating the 2,800 years of Yerevan's existence. So, it's a celebratory exhibit we have upcoming, begins July 11th through July 22nd. And we have an opening with artists, and hopefully, you esteemed members of the city council, community, and staff are invited to attend from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM. And I'll let Mr. Orbelyan speak for a second.
Yes, we are just, as you know, Yerevan is one of the oldest cities in the world, and we arrange this kind of exhibition in Glendale, where we promote our city, Yerevan, and we are all, hope that all the foreigners also living with here, with Armenians, they can visit the exhibition, and we can celebrate the City Foundation Day in September. So, this is one step like to promote Yerevan as an old capital in the world. Thank you, you are all invited.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
And I want to give you a heads up. I think at least the three of us are going to be out of town on Friday, unfortunately. I would love to be there for the opening, but we're going to be at a conference.
And the two others that are remaining in town?
The other one is already gone, he's not in town, and that leaves Mr. Najarian. I don't know if he's...
No, I'm at that conference as well.
Oh, he's at the conference, so we're all going to the conference.
And other esteemed members of the community...
You know, this is the city of my birth, so I would love to be there.
Our birth, yes.
Our birth, yes.
And happy birthday, belated birthday, Councilmember Devine.
Thank you, thank you very much, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
But we'll all be down to see it.
Yeah, I'll come down once I'm back.
Before it closes, believe us, yes, we will be.
It's a very brief exhibit, from, like I said, July 11th through the 22nd.
Okay, okay. It's a beautiful city, and I think everyone in our community should take the opportunity to come down to the library and take a look. You know, I offered a suggestion that they have a special section where we could do selfies, so that we were in Yerevan at the exhibit.
Good idea.
Can't wait to see it.
Like me, go there and take a photo.
Yeah, I would love to do that, I will, yeah.
I just have a question. Is this picture, is not obviously today's Yerevan?
This is 1978.
And it's not 2,800 years ago?
It's somewhere in between.
But closer to 1950s.
You're very good, very close, it's in the 60s, I believe.
In the collection, there are also some photos early, beginning of 20th century, some photos. So, it's from the museum collection of Yerevan history, up to the Soviet period, and nowadays, Yerevan, like three different periods.
Unfortunately, we didn't know of any photographers back from 2,800 years ago, so we couldn't unearth them. But the ones that we have are pretty descriptive. They give a good sort of description of what the city has gone through and evolved into until today, until the very recent revolution. So, some of, one of the artists, as a matter of fact, was published, his essay was published, Garin Mizorian, in the New York Times Review of Books. So, he'll be on exhibit, it should be really wonderful if you all can get a chance to see it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, what's next, Mr. Clerk?
Next on the agenda is action items. 8A is general manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding labor and materials contract for a city's Pratt &amp; Whitney power plant equipment at the Grayson Power Plant. 8A1 is resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing city manager to issue the labor and materials contract in an amount of $600,000.
Mr. Zern?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Unit 8 at the Grayson Power Plant is one of our largest of the remaining units there. It built originally in 1977, and also incorporated the two original units, 1 and 2, built in 1941 and '42, into a somewhat of a combined cycle unit. This past December, we had an internal explosion within the mechanism, and the equipment was immediately shut down. There was a subsequent OSHA investigation, as this was a safety-related issue. That investigation took some time. We could not repair the unit until the investigation was concluded. That was concluded, it was determined that we found what we think is the cause of the explosion, but in the meantime, the damage to the turbine was such that we had to call Pratt &amp; Whitney in, who is the manufacturer of the unit, to do an onsite analysis, in which they recommended we send the turbine back to their repair facility in Connecticut. So, tonight, what I'm asking is approval for us. The unit has been removed, or the turbine has been removed from the unit, is ready to be put on a truck, sent back to Connecticut. It will be taken apart and a repair made. The estimate from the Pratt &amp; Whitney staff that came onsite was $600,000. That's a conservative estimate, so I'm hoping it's something less than that. And I'm hoping to get the unit back by, that can be put back into service by the 1st of September as we reach what, it seems amazing, based on the last few days, but what is really the hot season for us here. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
I have some questions. And I guess it's indirectly related to the 8, Unit 8A. So, Friday was a pretty hot day.
Yes, sir.
And we hit some high loads. Is it true that we exhausted all our local generating capacity on that day?
Yes, sir.
So, everything that we had was gone?
Everything that we had operating, and this, the sister units, 8B and C, we could not get it to perform, so it tripped. So, we had all 200 megawatts of our transmission saturated. And what units we did have working, primarily 4 and 5. Even our Unit 9, which you're very familiar, is the one we want to keep in our proposed repower, could not reach full capacity. So, we were stretched to the absolute limit.
So, when you say our 200-megawatt transmission was saturated, that means we were taking everything that was available? All the lines coming into the city were filled with electricity to serve us?
Yes, sir. And, Mr. Najarian, we had very little margin. We started the day probably about a 20-megawatt margin, but there were several times during the day where we had nothing, and we did not have any contingency. Again, I say to you, as now veterans of our discussions with Grayson, you remember the N minus 1 contingency, the initial contingency? We didn't have that, which essentially is a violation of our balancing authority agreement. So, we did not have that available.
That's often scoffed at, the N minus 1. However, had we not been able to obtain additional capacity, would we have had rolling blackouts? Is that what the term is?
Yes, sir, if we would have had any of our units go down, or any of the transmission lines would have faltered. Because we did not have our N minus 1, or even our N minus 1 minus 1 contingency, rolling blackouts are what were required to then go, shedding load, they call it.
And who gets to play great energy director in the sky, as to who gets blacked out and who doesn't? Or is it even, are we a socialist?
We're socialists.
Where everyone, you know...
We actually have a very, a very specific plan that is updated each year. We do it on two-hour increments, it's done at the substation level. We, obviously, hospitals are exempted, police station, the civic centers are exempted, fire stations are exempted, high-safety areas are exempted. And we then will shut down a substation at a time for two-hour periods, and then roll to the next substation. We like to go literally north-south, east-west, and as you said, be somewhat socialist in how we spread that.
And so, I think we got rather fortunate. The extreme hot day event was just mainly limited to Friday.
Friday, correct.
I mean, if you can speculate, and if you can't, just say you'd be guessing, but if we had a three- or four-day streak of that, how would that have affected our system?
Mr. Najarian, Friday was 336-megawatt peak, our all-time record is 347, so you can see we got pretty close. You get a natural drop-off on the weekend. Saturday, the load goes down, the load requirement goes down, and Sunday even more, because a lot of the businesses and families leave their homes during those periods of time. My prediction is if this would have been a Monday-through-Friday incident, and we'd have had three or four hot days, I think we would have had some real serious problems.
To reiterate, Councilmember Devine's accolades for the crew, the linemen, the engineers, the management staff, to hold it together as well as you did. Congratulations on it.
Thank you, and I will be sure to pass that on. Just to follow up on both of those compliments. We called crews back in at 12:00 AM Friday morning, so they worked all day Thursday. We called them back at 12:00 AM, and they did not go home till 7:00 PM Sunday. So, we obviously rotated them for safety purposes, but we had crews here full capacity the entire weekend. But thank you.
I have a question. You're going to be sending this 8, 8A to be repaired in Connecticut? And how long will that take before?
Well, I'm hoping that we'll have it back in late August, so that we can have it installed by the first two weeks of September, as it starts to warm up end of September, 1st of October.
Right, so I think really the bottom line here is this has to be done. There's no question about it.
I agree, that's why it's here. And I, as much as it pains me to tell you this, because I know you've heard this from me before, because this seems like a tremendous amount of money. This is really not a complete fix. This is something that'll get the turbine in shape to put back in, and keep us running for the rest of the summer into the spring.
Is that a motion, Ms. Devine?
Sure.
I'll second it.
Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Zagajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Garpadian?
Najarian? Yes.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes. Next item, please.
He is city clerk regarding certifying the canvas of the June 5, 2018 special municipal election, consolidated with the County of Los Angeles statewide direct primary election. He won his resolution reciting the facts of the statewide direct primary election held on Tuesday, June 5, 2018, declaring the results and such other matters as provided by law. Mr. Mayor and council, this is just a simple report, as stated in the title that we just read into the record, reciting the facts of the election that we consolidated with the county for Measure P. The results, as stated in the report, and they're available for the public to review, show that it passed overwhelmingly by a margin of 83% voting yes to move the city's municipal election dates to a consolidated date in even-numbered years versus the biennial April of odd-numbered years. We're simply asking council, as a matter of protocol, to simply approve the results that have been reported back to us from the county. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about the statistics or information that is in your report.
Thank you, Mr. Zagajanian.
I'm just curious, we didn't have any other choice? What we could do? Because the threshold was you have to have over 25% of people to participate in it, and it's last few years of elections. So, did we have any other choice, rather than...
Well, there was choices presented to the council in the report that we brought forth regarding compliance with the California Voter Rights Participation Act, Participation Rights Act, CVPRA. And the choices were which date we want to consolidate with, whether we want, the council wished to consolidate with a general date or a primary date. However, in terms of what, whether we could continue to conduct our elections on odd-numbered years, still somewhat of a question, because I believe, at least city attorney and I share an opinion that this is slightly overstepping, I think, the fundamental rights of charter cities in their ability to elect their councils. Fundamental point of being a charter city is that. However, the Attorney General's opinion that was provided to the city of Pasadena, an inquiry that we also participated in, stated that they believe that the state law supersedes any authority that the cities, charter cities, may have in selecting their own councils.
Thank you.
So, technically, we could have tried to maintain our election date. Our statistics did not necessarily support that in terms of voter turnout, of having a standalone election date in April, but also other circumstances factored into this, and we had to go to the voters to, really, this was cleaning up the charter language, so it's consistent with the state law.
I'll move the item.
Isek. And I would, I have no opposition to that. I just would ask our city clerk, I know who is very experienced in crunching these numbers and drawing information from them, at which time, at such time, that, I know you don't have a lot of free time, but you're able to get into this a little deeper and give us some tidbits of what you learned and what trends maybe you saw in this election? It would be, it would be nice, since we are moving, this will be our election date in two years, and every, every two years after that. As well as maybe that little glitch that knocked out 8,000 voters. Not your glitch, the County of LA's glitch, let's be clear about that. In a close election, we've had some close elections, that might be significant. So, I will give that, I will ask on your own timeline, when you think you've had enough time to come forward with something, if you wouldn't mind contacting the mayor for agendizing it, or the city manager. I'd love to hear your thoughts and analysis on what you saw from this election.
Thank you, Councilman Najarian, and Mr. Mayor, and councilmembers. We were working as closely as we possibly could. This was an election that was conducted by the County of Los Angeles. However, people were, as they always do, and we welcomed their inquiries, were calling us in regard to the printing error that resulted in approximately 120,000 or 118,000 voters being left off the rolls throughout the County of Los Angeles. A little over 8,000 Glendale voters were affected by that error. We assured everyone that contacted the office that they do have the right to vote provisionally. They should be provided a provisional ballots staff at these various polling locations, was also encouraging them to vote provisionally. The statistics demonstrate, or have shown us that approximately 3,000 voters, over 3,000, may have been as high as 3,900, but I know it was well over 3,000, provisional ballots were cast in Glendale. How that tracks with other elections, we have not yet had time to look into that. And we do not know if all 3,900 voted provisionally because, or over 3,000 voted provisionally because of that printing error. And when we find out more, we can certainly share with you. I know that the county is doing everything in their part to make sure that similar errors do not occur in November.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second, may we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Zagajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Garpadian?
Najarian? Yes.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes, next item, please.
He is fire chief regarding purchase and replacement of seven automated external defibrillators and required preventative maintenance services from Zoll Medical Corporation on a sole-source basis. He won his resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing the purchase of approved equipment. 2 is a resolution appropriating $163,196.
Yes.
How about the mayor's house first? Good evening.
I wanted to discuss real quick, the item that you have before you is the next portion of what you approved back on May 8th for the replacement of our defibrillators. We've currently purchased one under a grant, and then we purchased another four, where you graciously allowed us to redirect some of our funds to be able to purchase that first phase. Because of that purchase, the community has reached out and has committed to donating $163,192 towards the purchase of four more, matching our funds, which is amazing. And that's the first half of that action item. The second half is the three that we would like to take from our capital outlay account to make that a purchase of a total of seven. With those seven, and the original five in the first phase, we'll be able to put these on every engine and truck in the city. We hope to have that online by September, with, of course, your approval. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. Actually, this is one of the four from the May 8th approval that just arrived yesterday. We quickly put it together, so if you had any questions, we could show you the progress that we're making.
And the original one is on a truck right now?
We have two that's in our pilot program right now. They've, we've worked with the area hospitals to be able to, as we discussed before, this was an unfunded county mandate, to be able to transmit our 12 leads to the hospitals. And our area hospitals have been receiving them since we were able to get those online. And as a matter of fact, Glendale Venice has awarded us the STEMI of the month. We were able to transmit a 12 lead from one of these, from a patient that we had in the field. Got them from the field into the cath lab, and the balloon inserted within 26 minutes, which is astounding, they have 90 minutes to make that happen. That happened in 26 minutes, because we literally sent them a 12 lead from the field to say this person is having a heart attack. Their team said, yes, he is. They activated their teams and reduced that time down to 26 minutes, so it's pretty impressive.
Mr. Mayor, oh, okay.
Thank you, Battalion Chief. Is there, in terms of saving lives, is there any piece of equipment more important than what you have in your hand right there?
Sir, no, there is not. This is an extremely...
Hold it up a little bit, so we can all get an idea as to what you have there.
This is what our paramedics are carrying on, our engines and trucks. So, you'll have a paramedic on every apparatus, our engines and trucks. And they'll bring this in, and again, it's a defibrillator and it's a monitor. And what that means is if we get to your house, and you've had a cardiac arrest, and you are not breathing, we can literally put this monitor on. It's, we can see that you're in what's called a D-Fid rhythm, which basically means your heart is kind of, it's almost like jealous, just sitting there, it doesn't have a rhythm. We shock that into a rhythm that you can actually pump blood through your system, and then we can do our 12 lead, we send out to the hospital saying, yes, this is a STEMI. Because that's typically what happens, is you have a heart attack. STEMI is an ST myocardial infarction, that's what the hospitals refer to, that's a technical term. So, now, we run that 12 lead, we suggest, yes, you had a heart attack because you were in a STEMI rhythm, and we're able to get those capped.
And so, the 12 lead are the cardiac monitors that are stuck to the chest and torso?
Yes.
And that's transmitted both on the screen there, but to the hospital? And also, there's a mobile app, too, you were explaining that...
Yes, and I don't know if you would be able to see if I pulled it up on my phone, which I can, but it's pretty interesting. Does anybody remember Squad 51? And they had, the guys out in the field would transmit, you know, to the hospital, and they would see that, you know, on TV.
I sure do. I was, I loved that show. I should have been a fireman, that was my hint.
So, I don't know if you can see that or not, but that's an actual EKG rhythm. And what that means is they're taking a picture of your heart. So, those 12 leads, you'll have four leads on your limbs, and then we put seven leads across the chest, and what it's doing is taking a picture of your heart from multiple directions. So, just like, you know, time is muscle, like we talked about before, depending on where you have a blockage in your heart, you can see it from only certain directions. So, if we just do a regular EKG, we might not see it. This allows us to see that, this has a computer inside that actually interprets that for us, confirms what we think we see in the field, and that's what we're allowed to transmit to the hospital. So, it's pretty impressive, that goes right to a doctor's phone in the ER, and they can interpret from that.
That's great, and I didn't mean at all to diminish the skill of the paramedics that are operating that, and they're hooking it up properly, and they're calming down the family, and trying to instruct the patients, so... I mean, it's great, it's great news, it's great that the community stood up, stepped up, along with the hospitals, to fund that. So, I'm very happy that we have that.
And if I can reemphasize, this was one conversation that happened at Glendale Memorial, where the CEOs reached out, the Glendale Memorial reached out to all the area hospitals, and when that one conversation, they all got on board, and it's been amazing, that commitment. And yes, this is just one of our tools, many tools in our toolbox for, you know, we're all-risk fire department, and as far as medical intervention, there's second to none. The see-through CPR that we discussed previously, the 12-lead EKGs, this is amazing that we can transmit, and the technology that's embedded in this tool is outstanding. And we appreciate any support that you can offer to allow that to happen. And we appreciate any support that you can offer to allow that to happen.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll move the item.
Second.
May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Agarjayan?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Garpadian?
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes. And do we just, we voted on item C, both one and two?
Yes.
Is that what your motion was?
I moved the whole.
Okay, the whole thing. Okay, very well, thank you. Next item, please.
Director of, at D is Director of Human Resources regarding establishment of classification titles and compensation for employees of the City of Glendale. One is resolution approving the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers IBW Local 18 Classification Compensation. Two is resolution approving Glendale Management Association GMA and GMA exempt classification compensation.
Mr. Mayor, member of city council, will have Amy Martin, Assistant Director of Human Resources, to provide a brief presentation on this item.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the item before you is mainly as a result of an existing MOU between the city and the IBW, which calls for an adjustment for IBW unit employees in the fourth year of the contract. Per the MOU, the adjustment is based upon a benchmark salary survey of similar classifications in our neighboring cities of Pasadena and Burbank. Human Resources conducted this survey in the spring, and that survey revealed that the classifications were essentially below labor market, some as much as 5, 7, 10 or more percent. The recommended adjustments are based on a sliding scale relative to the percentage each classification was below the labor market with a cap of 2%. And these adjustments would essentially bring the classifications a little bit closer to the labor market average for those classifications. All of the classifications are represented by IBW with the exception of one, which is represented by GMA, which is why you have two resolutions before you.
Questions?
As I understand it, this complies with our MOU with the IBW labor group, except for one, and a deal's a deal. We set the standards and the metrics for it, so I'll move the item.
Sec. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Agarjayan?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Garpadian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Thank you. What's next, Mr. Clerk?
Next on the agenda is oral communications. This is a five-minute portion, discussion is limited, item's not a part of this agenda. Speaker has a lot of five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there'll be no debate or decision. City Manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Daniel Brotman, followed by Jennifer Pinkerton.
Welcome back. Five minutes, right. I have some concerns about the Clean Energy RFP that I want to share with the council. Can you hear me? Yeah. We're now over two months into the three-month window for firms to submit bids. As you probably know, nearly 100 firms came to the pre-bid conference on May 30th. So, we know there was initially a lot of good interest, but we've done little to capitalize on the interest. And as time passes, I'm less and less confident we'll get the type of response we wanted. This has nothing to do with the availability of solutions or firms willing to offer them. It has everything to do with the way the process is being conducted. I'll give you an example. We offered to do something that a group called Clean Energy 805 did to support Edison's RFP in Santa Barbara and Ventura. Like ours, the Edison RFP was launched to solicit clean alternatives, in their case, to two gas plants in Oxnard. Clean Energy 805 is a coalition of environmental groups, similar to GEC, Glendale Environmental Coalition. 805 is the area code there, hence the name. What they decided to do is run some workshops to bring clean energy developers together with local property owners willing to site projects on their roofs, on parking lots, or other spaces. The idea, basically, was to make it easier for firms to identify counterparts so that they could put together more compelling offers into the RFP. Notably, notably Edison decided to collaborate with Clean Energy 805 on this. They ran two workshops together, which were very well-attended. I'm told there were over 100 attendees at each. A few larger companies made presentations, and then there were tables set up on different topics for people to go and mingle. We've talked to several companies that attended, and they said it was very helpful. We were hoping to do the same thing here, and I've spoken to some of you about this, and we offered the idea to GWP, but they weren't interested in partnering. They said they're doing their own outreach and that the city's economic development staff is involved. It turns out, though, that the only outreach that GWP has done is a one-paragraph email sent to 90 or so large utility users telling them about the RFP. That's it. There were no instructions on how to follow up, and there's been no other outreach by GWP or the economic development staff, as far as I know. In fact, it's not clear if GWP even ever discussed this with the economic development staff. I think this is a big, big missed opportunity. Since we couldn't do a workshop, there just wasn't enough time, and without GWP's support, I don't think it would have worked. Instead, what we decided to do is to call a number of the companies who signed up for the pre-bid conference to see how we can help as a community group on a one-off basis. You'll hear from others what we've learned. It's not very encouraging. Thank you. You'll hear from a few others in a minute to continue the story. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Brotman.
Can I ask?
Sure.
Mr. Zern, can you respond to the-
You might want to hear the rest of it, and then-
I, I'd like to hear the rest, Mr. Zern, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, council, member Devine. Certainly, Mr. Landisfame can attest to the fact that we've, we've been coordinating with, with his staff in, in trying to get the word out. We've also contacted our largest users. We've contacted them again to let them know that they can reach out to us. But as I indicated to, I think, all of you in a note, we, we can lead the, the horse to water, but once firms are doing business with local entities or, or putting together project teams, that's not really our concern, and quite frankly, they're going to talk to you a whole lot about it. I know a couple of joint efforts that I've been heard of, that have been mentioned to me in passing, but up until the time they put the proposal in, their business in putting together their, their proposal is their business, unless they have questions for, for us on, on what the submittal procedures are. The, the process to date, and, and this small group of folks seem to be the only one that have issues with it, I'm sure that there are some firms that aren't capable of meeting the criteria, and as you recall, the criteria we set forth was companies that could bring in and, and build projects that would be of such a nature as to help us offset thermal generation and the repowering of Grayson. I've been to a national conference of publicly-owned utilities and believe me, they know exactly what we're doing. This is well-attended by large development firms, many of whom are putting proposals together to submit to us. I have also heard from firms who have come to meet with me, questioning why they were contacted by, by these folks, because our list of attendees was made public to everybody. So, I've had to do some clarification with some firms, direct them to what I think is a good method for, for submitting a proposal. It's obviously their, their choice. So, outreach efforts, be they verbal between me and firms or between my staff and firms, you know, a lot of that has taken place. So, I, you know, I don't know to accept it to belabor the point that, again, you're going to hear a handful of people have criticized the process. They criticized me when I brought to a repower. Now, they criticize us when, when we're, we're trying to pursue a clean energy process. You know, this is not about putting, you know, having people encouraging them to turn their air conditioners down. As you saw last week, that doesn't work very well. We need very sizable projects that are reliable, that are dispatchable, that allow us to offset thermal generation, which I think was our goal, and still is. But it's a very open process. We've got a lot of interested parties. And when we come back to you in probably October, early October, you'll get a full presentation on what we found and anything that's viable for us to pursue further.
Thank you, Mr. Zern. Next speaker, Jennifer Pinkerton, followed by Michael Beck.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, to follow up on Dan Brotman's comments. We have been reaching out to companies who registered for the pre-bid conference, and we focused on talking to companies that are strong in distributed energy solutions and look likely to bid for projects on private sites, but we have also talked to a few that develop utility-scale solar or storage projects. And we've gotten to about 15 or so. Unfortunately, one thing we are hearing, not from everyone but a few, is some skepticism about the process and the city's seriousness. Some people have decided not to bid because they aren't convinced it will go anywhere. It's been called a fishing expedition, unfortunately. Now, we have tried to push back on that when we're speaking to these companies. We've argued that the council is very serious about finding alternatives to gas, and we've described the community's determination that Glendale become a clean energy champion. And you remember the hundreds of people that have turned out for council meetings on this issue. We have also pointed out that even if GWP puts in some gas, there's still a lot of opportunity for distributed solutions, not only in solar and storage, but also energy efficiency and demand response. Given the $500 million budget for Grayson, it really shouldn't be too hard to craft an energy efficiency or demand response offer that can shave peak loads, which was just discussed here tonight, at a lower cost than installing gas turbines. Another thing we're hearing is that GWP is unfortunately not being forthcoming with the information, yet it's asking for a lot of technical detail in the RFP, much more than a standard. A few potential bidders mentioned specifically that when they were dealing with Clean Energy 805, Edison provided customer-level load data under a non-disclosure agreement. Now, GWP has said they're not willing to do this, and we understand their legal constraints that prevent GWP from sharing certain information without customer consent. Fair enough, and IOU is very different from the muni, utility, but in any case, there must be workarounds that will help these companies interested in submitting bids, such as masking company names or aggregating data in a way that doesn't reveal any proprietary or sensitive information. What we're not seeing is willingness to go to extra mile to figure out a solution to that. We've also heard concerns that there's been very limited access to even city properties, such as their electrical plants, their panels, and their utility power data. Not having access to that makes it very difficult to formulate proposals. Ready access to this data is really very critical. In conclusion, one form, one firm told us they were not going to bid because it's too difficult to identify the local property owners in the limited 90-day timeframe of the RFP. They specifically said that if we had done a meet-and-greet like Edison and Clean Energy 805 did in Santa Barbara, which they attended and found very beneficial, they might have made a different decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Pinkerton. Yes, Mr. Zern?
Just comment. I, I will agree on one point. There has been a bit of skepticism on the part of some that we're simply going through an exercise here, and I've been the first to emphasize that that is absolutely not true. We're interested in finding the cleanest, cheapest energy we can that is reliable and dispatchable. And so, if they, if they can provide that, then we are definitely interested in that. I've said that at the California Energy Storage Association that I, I spoke at, I said it at the American Public Power Association that I spoke at, and I tell that to anybody who, who comes to me. Distributed energy, I've talked to three firms with distributed energy, actually some pretty revolutionary ideas, and I really hope that, and encourage them to put something in. Mr. Garcia, I don't know if you know, I've had, I know we've signed at least two NDAs with firms that are willing to sign an NDA to give them information. You talk about opening a panel to look at a panel, you got to remember one thing, there's a security issue, a huge security issue that goes with our facilities. But if we have somebody that wants to come in and want to sign an NDA, we do try to protect customer data to the level that the law requires us to release, but we have given multiple tours of our facilities. We gave it on the day of the, of the pre-proposal conference. We had tours of our site plus tours of any site that anybody wanted to go see, any public property. We couldn't take them on private property, but we did take them on public property, and they, we asked them to just give us a notice ahead of time when they're RSVP, and we would take them around, and anytime after that, we'd be willing to take them around.
Thank you. Michael Beck, followed by Joseph Gabish?
You've already heard what Dan and Jennifer said, and I've heard the responses from GWP, and I have to admit that I am not sure what's going on here, except that our experience has not been what we're hearing tonight. We had a call this morning with one company, an international, national company, and what we heard from them is not what we're hearing tonight from GWP. This particular company that I cannot give the name of, because it's private, but like I say, they operate nationally, they are not participating in this RFP. They say the RFP requires a level of detail that makes prep work very costly and time-consuming. One example is the RFP requires a list of hardware parts, like conduit sizing and wiring sizing and things like that. There's a catch, however. The GWP has not provided enough information about their system, so this company could come up with that very kind of detail. They say the other companies may base bids on assumptions, but this company does not operate that way. This very company, once again, operates both nationally, internationally, is participating in the Edison RFP up in Ventura, where this kind of detail was not required by the RFP. They're also concerned about, I guess, the scuttlebutt, that GWP is somewhat resistant to alternative energy, and what I'm hearing tonight is this is not at all true, and I sure hope it's not true, but they're, like I say, it's not the experience, it's not what we're hearing from other sources. So, I guess our concern, and I guess I'm speaking not only for myself but for the Glendale Environmental Coalition, is that we really hope that the RFP process is indeed open enough so that it's just not a, a motion being gone through to justify going to the gas-fired repowering. This same company says that their experience and with the systems they have built is that behind the meter, solar and energy storage can beat out gas peaker plants with the cost savings of up to 10%, and they would be happy to discuss this more with GWP. So, we're hoping this indeed happens. We do not want to overstate our case. We have talked to companies that think they can make do with the current RFP process, even though it's, they have to do quite a bit of guessing because they don't have the information that is available from other companies on RFPs. We just hope that when their proposals do come in, that they pass muster and that GWP will be flexible and working with them so that the bidders can do more of a site analysis and have more access to information to come up with viable proposals. We are very concerned, we've heard from a large number of firms that despite, that have decided to pass up on the RFP proposals, and we hope these reasons get analyzed by GWP, and if GWP doesn't do this, our organization will. Now, the RFP process is closing in just a few weeks, and we just wanted to make sure these concerns are on the table so that if the city does not get vigorous proposals on clean energy and not just, you know, large- and not just, you know, large, you know, things, you know, that are limited to a specific site, like a public power production. But, you know, this distributed energy as well, that these proposals that will come in. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Beck. And we have Joseph Fabish. Followed by Katie Morphopoulos.
Hi. Greetings to all of you. This is my first time at a council meeting. It's been very inspiring. And I'm honored to talk and to meet with all of you. I'm here this evening because I have a citation I have been given for encroaching on the public right-of-way. I live at 3484 Linda Vista Road. It's a special section of Glendale. Let me give you some background. First of all, I was born and raised around Glendale. Went to kindergarten, elementary school, junior high school, high school. And Glendale College, I graduated. It took me 15 years to get a university degree. I finally did it. I am an elder. I am legally, psychologically disabled and have been all of my life. And I'm also physically disabled. I'm in the twilight years of being able to walk. I'm wheelchair-bound. All of that being said, I was able to buy the home I live in in 1985. I'm the third owner of that home. Unbeknownst to me at the time I bought the home, it was the first home built on the northeast section of Upper Chevy Chase Canyon in Glendale. There was not another home 360 degrees around me. When they built that home, they built the home over the boundaries on both sides of the property. As Glendale changed, that led to some issues and problems and some lawsuits since I have been in that home. And I've had to endure accusations of trespass in the courts, all the time prevailing, in order to ascertain the rights to not only get in and out of my home from the front, but also along the side. There had been a lot line adjustment on one side. As my home now stands, it sits on the property of the other side of my neighbor. Around, I decided to spend my time because I wasn't able to work restoring the home and repairing the home. And I began doing that in earnest in the late 1990s. Around 2003, I began to repair the front of my home. And in doing that, I began to repair the driveway. I was given a triple-fee violation as stop-work order, which lasted for three years until it was finally lifted when I was able to show the city of Glendale that in fact, no, that they had been using the front of my home as a semicircular driveway since the 1920s. I was able to prove that up with them by declaration from the original, from the daughter of the people originally, built the home in pictures as well, showing Model Ts in front of that home. They lifted that order and they guided me. And they gave me permission to build the walls and to build, put down the cobblestones and to do the improvements that I did to make the home not only habitable and not only safe, but I don't know if any of you have been in that part, driven up in that part of Linda Vista Road, but I also made it fit in to the natural beauty of the area. I put on a green slate roof, put on a copper chimney. I have a garage door that is made out of more than 3,000 separate pieces of hand-carved mahogany. No, I've done my best to be a good neighbor. I'm recently embroiled in yet another lawsuit. As a result of that lawsuit, there arises this violation. And I wanted to request and ask the council members, the city attorney, no, and the heads of the departments to please meet with me, no, so that we can look at the documents and resolve the issues short of having to have me tear out what they have allowed me to build, on one hand, and on the other hand, to spend the thousands and thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars in order to get the encroachment permits and with no guarantee that I'm not going to be have to tear it out. So if you can help me, I would appreciate it. I appreciate this democratic process that I've learned.
Thank you, sir. Yes.
So, Mr. Lanzaffan, you'll take his information or city clerk?
I think it's Public Works and Legal that will follow up.
Public Works and Legal will follow up.
Thank you very much.
So, Arjuna, did you have the same question?
That's what I was going to ask the city attorney to take care of this issue. Maybe there is legal issues. Legal issues are involved with this, so.
I'm having difficulty reading this one. Katie Morphopoulos? Is that close?
Yes.
Was that it? Okay, good. Good, I got it right. Followed by Robert Hug.
Good evening, councilmen. I have an interest in drug education and prevention, and this covers the area of high THC marijuana products. According to the law, each city has the right to allow or ban cannabis. One in three cities in California permit cannabis businesses of some type within their borders. And the primary reason is tax revenue. We know the health risk associated with high tax, excuse me, with high THC cannabis, so let's focus on the tax revenue. So the reason that Glendale would be potentially interested would be tax revenue. Would the cannabis shops bring net tax revenue to Glendale that would outweigh the costs? Is it good business for Glendale? So in 2018, the expected tax revenues from the legal sales of cannabis was estimated by Proposition 64 proponents to be $250 million per quarter. That means January, February, March of 2018, they were expecting $250 million in revenue. So here's the result of it. California did not make as much money on marijuana taxes as expected. The black market is blamed. First quarter revenue, turns out, is $34 million. $34 million versus $250 million. Now, these figures were released in May by the Legislative Analyst's Office. That was a miss of 87% by the cannabis industry and a miss by Governor Brown of 60%. That's a big miss. That's not a little miss. That's huge. Now, what was the reason that they said for this failed revenues? The reason, according to the industry, is the high taxes. The taxes are creating sticker shock. All cannabis sales, all cannabis legally sold in California comes with an excise tax, cultivation tax, obviously the sales tax. And the way they put it is the 57 cities in California tacked on their own taxes. That would be if Glendale had permitted shops, they would be tacking on, which is an interesting way to put it, their own taxes. Then what you have is a quick search on online dispensary directory weed map showed that the cheapest price for an eighth ounce of marijuana from a legal shop in Santa Ana was $28, while an unlicensed shop nearby sold the same product for $15. Think about Glendale. We are surrounded by illegal shops of LA, illegal shops in Pasadena. So what would Glendale have to gain by putting permitted shops in when you already know that they can't compete? That's what the industry is saying, they can't compete. So what are our two choices? We lower the tax. They're talking about that right now at the state level, lowering the tax to try to get the cannabis industry to be profitable, the legal part. Therefore, the other thing is to close the illegal shops. Glendale doesn't have illegal shops at the moment. LA, hundreds of illegal shops operating in LA. LAPD cracking down on illegal shops, arresting dozens, hundreds more. So here's Glendale's situation, is that how are they going to close your illegal competitors? Well, the investigations in Los Angeles, according to the police department, says they can be lengthy. The police are prioritizing the targeting of shops that are causing the crime in the area and generating complaints from the community, none of which you would have any control over. They are outside of your borders. Your competitors are outside of your borders. Inside of your borders, you would be adding your tax and making your businesses non-competitive. Now, what is the relevance of this? How much city tax is too much? Well, any tax is too much because they're already saying, the cannabis industry is saying, we can't compete against the illegals. They want the state government to crack down on the illegals. They want this, they want that. None of this is something which is in your control. So I suggest that you should not be interested in investing in a business which missed their projected numbers by 60 to 87%, and its future success depends on closing down competitors that you have no control over. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Hug, followed by Ian Melzer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Council members. I'm actually here to discuss the same topic as the last lady. To cut to the chase, I would recommend to you and ask you to keep the ban that we have on marijuana businesses in Glendale. A friend of mine let me know that you're getting a little bit of pressure from folks in the business industry to try and open that up. And so I wanted to come here tonight and address that with you from my subjective view. I'm an engineer and a roboticist. And for many, now many decades, I can say, I'm actually 44. I look a little younger. I've been working with high school kids and junior high kids and grade school kids in a robotics competition, among other areas. And I also went to a junior college. I went to Pasadena City College. And so I know what that experience is like with our college here in Glendale. I live up the street from GCC. I can say with certainty, from my experiences with these young folks, that having more easily accessible access to marijuana is a problem for them in the future. Not all of them, but a huge majority. It kind of derails them on my work with them and continuing education and getting that next degree and having a happy life. So the other thing, which I think was just mentioned, is it's a known thing that the medical system is broken in allowing 18-year-olds to obtain high THC drugs. So 21 and under, it is a fact that it is damaging to their systems. And so I would like to make sure that we do everything we can to not make these drugs easily accessible to the young folks in our community. I and several hundred fellow engineers worked for, I worked for six years on a rover that we landed on Mars in 2012. And so I'm mentioning that because I would like to recommend that you use real information, real facts, that's what we do in our industry, to determine the right course of action to achieve things that are very hard to figure out. And so not hearsay and not people proposing to you things that are not going to work out, but actual facts along the lines of actually what you just heard, the trouble that Los Angeles is having, Pasadena is having, the cities in Colorado are having. And all that trouble is easily kept out of our community and our city if we just stick with the current ban that we have. And so that's what I would like to recommend to you. I live just up the street from GCC and a school. And so me and my neighbors have a community of kids and youth. And so we feel very strongly about this. And since I have one more minute, I would like to, on a brighter note, say to you, I have really enjoyed living in this city. I really love it, I know as much as you all do. And so I just wanted to thank you for everything you've done so far. And please continue to make it just an amazing place for us all to live and for our kids to grow up. Thank you very much.
Thank you for those kind words. Ian Melzer, followed by Sage.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me? I just wanted to share a few words about what I'm concerned about when it comes to marijuana. I am 19 years old. I am still a high school student. And I have friends who have been affected by marijuana very negatively. The effect that marijuana has had upon those of my generation is not a good one. Good friends that I grew up with who started doing marijuana have changed to the point where I don't even recognize them anymore. One of them wanted to be an actor, another wanted to be an engineer, just as an example. After starting marijuana, however, they've given up on their dreams. They've become lazy and uninterested in life. For example, I had a friend who was one of the most caring individuals you could possibly know. He would do anything for his friends. He would make sure that these people were taken care of. He would do, he would literally give his life to make sure that these people were safe. However, after being on marijuana for several years, he became the most uncaring individual that I know of. He, his best friend was once sexually assaulted. And he didn't do anything to help her. He didn't support her. He didn't, he didn't care. And he'd been friends with her for at least six years. He, you know, they went through it thick and thin. You know, he helped her get off of drugs once. And then when he went on, you know, she tried, but he refused. And he just became this person that I just, I can't associate with him anymore. Many people, specifically kids and teens, don't understand why marijuana is a dangerous drug. They've been fed lies time and time again that's twisted their perception of it. And I feel that there needs to be a level of education for children and young adults so that they know the harmful effects of mind-altering drugs, such as marijuana, can be the cause of. I want to reduce the accessibility of this drug as much as humanly possible. And I want us to teach those who don't know why it is banned in the first place. Otherwise, most people my age, you know, young adults, don't see it as something that's important. They see it as another rule that's restricting their freedom. Recreational marijuana is a known gateway drug. And while people are never forced to go onto more hardcore drugs, their choice has been influenced in the past by marijuana. And as we all know, we have an opioid problem in the United States, and it's widespread. By limiting the ways to access or outright banning the use of medical and recreational marijuana, we can, at least in Glendale, we can possibly mitigate this crisis, if only on a small scale. I hope my words have given you a better idea of what marijuana has done to my generation. The sad part, however, is that what I've said is only the tip of the iceberg. The fact that high THC marijuana is called medical marijuana doesn't suddenly change its fundamental composition. It's still marijuana, and it still has the same basic effects. And I don't believe that it should be easily accessible because we know that in the past, that medical marijuana has been illegally obtained for recreational use. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Sage, no last name, just Sage, followed by Karen Samsky.
Hi.
Hello. Last name Ston Snider, so I guess we didn't write it down. Good to see you guys again. I'm talking on the same subject as them and checking in. And I want to give you guys sort of an insight because I was actually directly involved with the sort of an insight because I was actually directly involved with the industry, the marijuana industry, before it was where it is now. Obviously, the money is something we all got to look for. You guys are trying to do something better for your city. Trying to go, okay, how do we fix things, how do we prevent power outages, how do we do things that are different? See you in a bit. The thing is, when I was younger, I smoked weed. And then I got into growing weed. And this guy was like, dude, we can grow weed now, and it's totally legal. And guess what? We can grow up to 99 plants in our backyard. That's legal. And then he was like, plus, if somebody else moves in with me and signs up for it, we can do two times 99 plants. Okay, great. We had nowhere to put it. It wasn't going anywhere. He was just, great, we're going to take this to some store and see how that's going to happen. So from point A to point B, we were in a car with over 40 pounds of marijuana, driving around, going, who's going to buy this from us? Now, 20 years ago, that was drug dealing. It was like proper drug dealing. But because we had a card and we were going to a store, that was a business dealing, right? Now, this weed gets, kind of like Overstock.com, it doesn't sell for two weeks, guess where it goes? Out the back door. That's it. And the people who grow the weed, they sell half of it, but half of it's not doing too well. Where does that go? Out the back door. All my friends came over to his place, bought it from him, half the price. Listen, it's a, people are going to do what they want with their bodies, they're going to figure it out, but why make it super easy for them to do? Why make it one of those things where the people who are the opinion leaders of the city are saying, this is fine? Oh, well, if they say it's fine, then I guess it's okay. Because unfortunately, a lot of people don't have correct judgment. And day to day, we have that too. We have moments where we go, am I right? Is this the right decision? Do I know what I'm doing? And you call your sister, your mother, you even ask your kids, is this how I would do this on my phone, right? So people will ask, is this right? And if it looks like it's right, then they're going to go that way. And then you end up 30 years down the line going, okay, maybe I shouldn't have listened to those people. That's it. Thank you.
Good evening.
Sage. Next speaker is Karen Samsky.
Good evening. Glendale's greatest challenge is the growing disparity between affordable and market rate housing. An out-of-state interloper, Champion Real Estate, recently bought two multifamily buildings as value-add acquisitions. Quote he hands required here. "The only value being added is to Champion's coffers as they extract wealth from our city through excessive rent increases, leaving devastated renters in their wake. By every measure, producing affordable housing strengthens the fabric of our community. It's good for all Glendale residents, helping our city thrive." Is this one of Glendale's core guiding principles? No, we cannot pretend otherwise. There is zero evidence to support a myth that it is. So I ask you, do we, as a community, as a city, have the moral will and the backbone to make stable, affordable housing a core value? That's not a rhetorical question. That's why we're here every week. Renters have earned a stake in the success of this city as decision-makers and equal partners in community development organizations. For that matter, food cooperatives, worker-owned businesses that pay a living wage. These enterprises also help communities grow for the many, not just the few. Where's the leadership on this? That's not a rhetorical question either. There are two direct actions city council could take right now to begin to remedy this growing disparity. First, even though the FHA doesn't require developers to designate 20 percent of their units to affordable housing, Glendale could require that any developer proposing to do business here must be committed to that program, at the very least, if you're committed to affordable housing as a core value in Glendale. Little government statistics here before the second one. To afford market rate rent in Glendale or anywhere in the LA area, a household has to earn $100,000 a year. But the median income in Glendale is $54,000. And 47 percent of Glendale households earn less than $50,000 annually. Divide the $50,000 into 12, you get 4,167 gross per month. The common rule use that all landlords go by is of 30 percent of that gross income on rent, that would be $1,250 a month. The average rent for a studio apartment in Glendale? $1,929. How many people do you think it's possible to pack into a 400-square-foot studio to come up with that monthly nut? The vast majority of households must spend more than 50 percent of their income on rent. That's an inhumane amount of money to ask anyone to spend for a roof over their heads. Then if you spend more than 50 percent of your income on housing, I'm sure the answer's no, because you're homeowners. And unless you're confronted with it, you don't even have to consider it. So the second remedy, which is urgent because people's lives hang in the balance, is rent stabilization, rent control. Surely, you already know these numbers, and yet the city council steadfastly refuses to address this chasm of social inequality and basically acts deaf, dumb, and blind to the very real economic suffering that's a plague on Glendale's house. You have the incredible opportunity of being leaders with a vision to reimagine Glendale, build unity, and create a city that puts all the people that live here at the center of its economy, a city that has meaningful programs to create decent and affordable housing with safe and clean streets. Perhaps the major property owners on the city council should recuse themselves from any votes related to affordable housing because of the obvious conflict of interest, so the council can get about the business of taking care of its residents in an effective and meaningful way. Reflecting on Arti Kasakian's invocation on May 22nd, my invocation tonight is for the city council to be healed from its indifference and to take action in the best interest of the majority of the residents of Glendale who are drowning in the rising waters of ever-increasing rents.
Thank you. Gregory Lemley, followed by Jim Nocella.
Mr. Lemley already made his comments.
Lemley already spoke. Jim Nocella, followed by Gyanet Hosunyan.
Jim Nocella, that's me. I'm a Glendale resident, member of the Glendale Tenants Union. You are the Glendale City Council elected by the people of Glendale. You're supposed to make laws good for the people of Glendale. You're supposed to protect them. 130,000 of the people of Glendale are renters. Because of the housing shortage in Southern California and because there are no rent control laws in Glendale, these people are subject to huge increases in rent. The statistics show that persons that are burdened by their rents, persons paying more than 30 percent of their income for rent, number 78,000 people in Glendale. 78,000 people. So statistically, 40 percent of all the people in Glendale are suffering because of rents that are out of control. And we all know that that number is increasing every day. I'm here, we're all here to ask you to do something for your people. Do something for your people. You and your staff put a rent stabilization law on the ballot in November, ask the people of Glendale if they want it. Put the law we are promoting, this law here, we're going around getting 11,000 signatures for, put the law we are promoting on the ballot. Help the people of Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you. Gyanet Hosunyan, followed by Ella Yeria Zarian. Gyanet Hosunyan. Okay. Ella Yeria Zarian. Haik Mahmuriyan. Lemon Fan. Oh, Haik, you're here. Okay. Followed by Lemon Fan.
All right. Good evening, folks. I am, I'm going to start to get used to being over here. I plan to be here pretty often because I feel, I know that rent control is not a partisan issue, it's not an issue to be debated. It may be an issue to look at the details of how strong of a rent control ordinance to pass, and of course, we want a strong one. But not having rent control in Glendale is basically saying you don't care about 60 percent of Glendale. The constituents that have elected you, you don't care for them. And we know why, because those are the people that don't vote as much, those are the people that have two jobs and have no time to come here. There was a lot more people here today, but a lot of them left. One has a mother who is sick and no one, no ability to afford to take care for her, so she had to go, of course, to take care of her mother. A couple of people earlier are themselves in their 80s. Of course, they are feeling that they need to go home and rest. And there are countless people like that. I am determined to encourage folks to really ask folks to be here in big numbers. But again, as I said last time I was here, if you're getting it to the point when we have to do this, you are not leaders. I want to work with you. I want to figure out how we can do this together. But leaving to the point when we have to turn out in numbers, we just had that conversation earlier outside, people were asking me, like, why should we come out here? Don't they understand? And it's true. Why? And the answer is very simple. Because you are making a decision at this point whether you show that you actually care for the livelihoods, for the lives of the people that you were elected to represent, or do you want a sick grandmother who has a sick mother and children to come out here? Do you want the mother who has work and classes to study for come out here with her children and wait and wait and wait until you decide to do something? Again, we will be coming out in numbers, but know that we would like to have a city council that does not wait for the most vulnerable of its constituents to be showing up to do something that is so clear needs to be done. I was going to say some other things, but I think it's just very important to thank first and foremost all the people that came out today. So I want to direct this to all the people, and I want to say in Armenian, shat shnurakal tsun bolorit vore esor ekelek. Yes, gitem shat derech en karavacel esor minal, shat talber pacharnerov, shnurakal em bolorin, kantrumem pochancek im shnurakal tsun nere yav mer bolori vartsakal nere im utsan shnurakal tsun nere bolorin ukker karavacan gal. And instead of going into details, you know, we can get to those things, you know, we have a very clear plan, we have an ordinance, you know, you consider ordinances for pet protection, and you should, absolutely, consider ordinances for human protection, please. And so I just want to finish with more of a hunker to, a little shout-out to what has happened in Armenia. I think that's one thing that can give us hope, one of the many things perhaps, but one thing that can give us hope, as I ask you to agendize and put on the ballot, not just on the ballot, to pass rent control. I want to paraphrase again, phrase from the Armenian movement a couple of months ago, and say, making teda meh khaqaki, we are the owners of our own city. Duhov.
Lemon Fan, followed by Sophia Azarian.
Good evening, mayor, council members, and city staff. My name is Lehman Fawn, and I am a resident of Glendale. I currently live in the Windsor Villas apartment where I was shocked by the $800 rent increase that I received. My neighbors, many of who were here today, there's over 60 of us, are also being affected by this 66 percent increase in rent, and in some cases, even more than that. It's not right for a company to have the ability to come in and uproot these many lives this quickly. I come to you as a member of your community. I come to you as a taxpayer. I come to you as a voter for your leadership in standing up for what is right and in standing up for 60 families that make up your community. This is not a statistic, this is real life, and real lives are being affected right now. Laws should be designed to protect the rights of the people and not the rights of companies to prey on an entire company, community of people. I hope you will support rent control in Glendale. I hope you will support the 60 real families this is directly affecting right now. We, at this crucial time, are looking to you for your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Sophia Azarian, followed by Arpik Andresyan.
Hi, I'm Vetsi. It's great to meet you. Nice to meet you.
Sophia's not here, but Vetsi is. Arpik Andresyan.
Tom, we let you sit up with us one day, and you go crazy with the old.
All right. Next, Arpik Andresyan. Did I read that right? Firuns?
My name is Mashinka Firuns Hakopian. I moved to Glendale in 1991 and have lived here intermittently since then. For over 20 years, my mother worked as an immigration paralegal in Glendale, helping Armenian asylum seekers become residents of the city. Over recent years, I have watched those immigrant residents systematically displaced, one after the other, due to a lack of affordable housing. Six members of my own family have had to leave Glendale in the last two years alone, my immediate family, among countless others. Today, as you've heard, over 60 families at 1377 Windsor are facing eviction due to $800 rent increases. Nearly two-thirds, two-thirds of Glendale renters are classified as rent burdened. There is a name for what is happening in Glendale today. It is economic violence. This is a word that political theorists and economists use to denote precisely this situation. It describes a condition where the material conditions necessary for the survival of a community are systematically destroyed. It is not a metaphorical term or a hyperbolic term because it denotes a situation where it is literally impossible for communities to survive. That is a situation that faces Glendale today. Elected officials who do not intervene are not only complicit in economic violence, they are active agents of and perpetrators of economic violence. The economic violence in Glendale disproportionately targets immigrant communities and communities of color. As you're aware, many of Glendale's immigrant residents relocated here precisely to flee economic and military violence in their own countries. Many of them elected you. They know, we know, from personal experience, that when a community is systematically subjected to economic violence, it is inevitable that they will organize and resist. And as your community's residents are 40 percent Armenian, we've recently seen the effects of organized resistance in the Velvet Revolution in Armenia. That is what the Glendale Tenants Union is doing here today. Communities fighting against economic violence, communities organizing to ensure their own survival, communities demanding affordable housing and rent stabilization. That is what you are seeing here today. You will not be seeing this for the first time. Until these calls for economic justice are met, until the survival of Glendale's communities is prioritized over and above the accumulation of wealth, until you realize that you are not operating in isolation, there are people writing about this, that writing is trafficking widely, there are people organizing. This is what you will continue to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Hogg, followed by Beverly Holiday. Robert Hogg. Beverly Holiday. Beverly Holiday. Oh, Ridge Gonzalez. Followed by Naira Sobatyan.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Good evening, Mayor. My name is Ridge Gonzalez. My concern is definitely what's going on with rent control here in Glendale. I think it's an important issue that you be very clear that if you don't actually support this issue, that you might as well just go ahead and give everybody a tent and let them go ahead and hang outside under the Two Freeway. Because that's what's gonna end up happening with many of the residents here. I actually live in the city of L.A. I am actually an owner of a multi-unit property in the city of L.A., and I believe in rent control. I believe in the need to protect the tenants. I believe that as a landlord, I can still make a reasonable profit. And with rent control, I'm required to do things to keep my units safe, sanitary, and habitable. If you don't do that, you don't put those caps on owners. You're gonna have, you're gonna have absolute chaos. If you don't know this now, there is 86 units in the city of L.A. who are being evicted, very similar to what's happening to the tenants here in Glendale with an $800 rent increase. These tenants decided for themselves to go ahead and go on a rent strike. These are immigrants who are taking on a landlord. So we call that the Battle of Burlington. I'm very much in support of these tenants. I see them once a week, figure out how to give them support that they need. So my question to you, Councilmembers, where will you be when all these renters, who I'm gonna call the gladiators of Glendale, what side are you going to be on? When you see this uprising happening with renters? My concern as a property owner is seeing all of these little corporations building all these little portfolios, right? They are, they are corporations. They are not people caring about people. It is complete treachery when I see these corporations coming in, sucking all the money out, doing nothing to actually renovate these units, selling them, again, at a higher cost. And because there is no rent control, the next new owner comes in and does these rent increases, which is what's happening in your city. And if you can't see that, I'm not sure if you need to borrow my glasses or you need to get a new set. But you need to see it. It's happening in your city. I live in L.A., and I see it happening to your city. Thank you.
Naira Sobatyan, followed by Elena Pogosyan.
Good evening, dear Mayor and Councilmembers and City Staff. My name is Naira Sobatyan. I'm a resident and property owner in South Glendale. Last week, I attended the Planning Commission meeting where the South Glendale Community Plan was presented. Even though the public and the Planning Commissioners raised numerous concerns about the plan, the Planning Commission yet recommended the approval of the plan only because of the pressure by the city staff that the metro grant was about to expire. The staff assured that the Planning Commission's vote applied to the tropical development only. This was not true, because the recommended approvals included amendments to the land use and circulation element of the general plan, which make changes everywhere. I'm here to talk about a very important question asked by the public and by the Planning Commissioner Leonard Manukyan at the meeting last week. And the question is, why are we doing this? Based on the SCAC projections, only 2,012 new units will need to be added from 2015 until 2040. We are already in 2018. Based on the EIR, with no project, that is, with no change to the current zoning, we will add over 2,587 new units. This is more than the needed housing by the SCAC projections. So why are we doing this? Glendale has already met the housing mandate of the state. The only thing we need at this time is 700 affordable units. The South Glendale Community Plan does not definitively answer if or where the 700 affordable units will be provided. Today, we heard a lot of people speaking about their increasing rents and unlivable conditions. All these new developments in Glendale only displace their affordable units by luxury units they cannot afford. These new developments, under the false pretext of transit-oriented development, actually displace the vulnerable people who do use transit by people who would never use transit. If a person can afford to pay 2,500 for a studio, that person will not be taking a bus. Today, you have been also handing a proclamation for Parks Make Life Better. The South Glendale Community Plan doesn't provide for parks or recreation space. It only talks about the improvement of the parks and create linear parks, which are nothing but the R-1250 setbacks, which the South Glendale Community Plan proposes to eliminate. We already have a crisis in the downtown which affects every Glendale resident. We have a moratorium in place because there is exceeding density full of health and safety hazards. Just because we believe the DSP's EIR, we miscalculated the numbers, misjudged the circumstances, and trusted developers' promises. I don't go to the Glendale Mall for shopping anymore. I go to Eagle Rock, because there's less traffic and more parking there. And I'm not alone. Recently, I read an article about a Syrian refugee who helped save a sinking boat. The boat, which could take only six people, was boarded by 20 Syrian refugees fleeing the war. In the middle of the sea, the boat's motor failed due to overcrowding, and the boat started sinking. The Syrian refugee and three others tied themselves to the boat and swam for three hours to the shore to save themselves and others. Back to us in South Glendale. South Glendale is a boat that is overcrowded and is sinking. There is no emergency to justify further overcrowding. The only proper plan should be to hold the overcrowding, to provide more room for open space, to downzone more areas to create a buffer against the state bills that are in place and that are coming, and to cap the developments, and also to provide affordable housing. That is what Pasadena is doing these days. And yet, South Glendale Community Plan increases the density in South Glendale by four times over the SCAC projections, despite seven adverse environmental impacts. The question is why? The Planning Director the other day said, "We're going to have those seven adverse impacts with no project anyway." So this is like saying, yes, you're in the sinking boat, and yes, you're going to die anyway, so let us add more people on your boat. A community plan is supposed to first and foremost accommodate the reasonably projected growth of the population. It is supposed to reduce and mitigate the adverse impacts and not to make them worse. In a couple of weeks, the South Glendale Community Plan will be brought before you for approval. You will also be told that certifying the EIR is just a formality and does not mean anything. That's not true. Certifying the EIR means you agree with its findings, means you know exactly what will happen in Glendale based on the EIR. But the EIR does not provide those answers. I just want you to think about the sinking boat of South Glendale, to reconsider the hazardous development direction this dual city has taken and to do the right thing. The $500,000 metro grant is not worth endangering the lives of over half of Glendale, 100,000 people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, next and last, is Elena Pogosyan.
Hello, my name is Elena Pogosyan. It's a big honor to talk today in front of you. I am employee of Glendale Unified School District. I'm working with children, and my task to teach our children to solve very hard problems and never give up. But today, I'm here just because I cannot solve my problem along with my neighbors. If my salary only 1,500, and I have jobs that I really love, and I never check how much I get during the month, but today, I'm thinking, given Star School's year, where will be my route? Because I cannot afford to pay 1,800, 1,900 for my one-bedroom apartment. And horrible part is that I am not alone, and there are lots of children. They have, now is summertime, and they're all, right, mostly are at home with somebody. But every day from morning 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., there's drilling, dust, all this stuff, going construction around. Of course, we don't have rent control, but at least we have the right to live in an apartment right now where we're just paying for, have this quiet time. Like, last week, my neighbors were fighting with each other. Police came and took one of them because we cannot sleep, but nobody can control what these people who have money doing with us during the daytime. Some people working nighttime, they need rest. Sometimes myself, my rest time during week, but I don't have time to rest, moment to rest, because this drilling, this is like somebody drilling my head in my bedroom. I don't know. I just came here to talk, just because I cannot solve this problem. I'm really ask you, if you have any opportunity, help us. Thank you.
Yeah, this is, this, somebody can talk to her and she...
Mayor Sananian, members of City Council, we actually received some information and email from one of the speakers in regards to the property and the construction that was going on. We forwarded over that to Phil's office. They sent inspectors out, and I foresee some information coming back on those issues about the construction on the property and the health standards.
Okay, can you get back to us as to what you find out?
Will do. I know that the inspectors, both Building and Neighborhood Services, were heading out there. And in fact, I had asked earlier tonight for status. I'll get that back to you.
So we have her number that you can get back?
We have, we have. We should have a number. We have the email address. If you want to provide your phone number also to the clerk, that'd be helpful. Ms. Pogosyan? Okay, that's the last card that we have, and therefore, we're gonna move on to the next item, which is new business. Do we have any new business? We do not. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
And we're adjourned at 8:42.